All right, I have been signaled from the television booth that we are up and running. So, good evening to the Board of Education meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, May 27, 2014. And on my clock, I'm gonna hit this one again. On my clock, it's 6:31. All right, we'll start this one off by taking roll call, and I'm looking around the table. It looks like all members are present. I'd like to invite everyone to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me. All right, next up on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any conversation? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, we're gonna move to the fun here. This is the recognition of students, staff, and public. The first one up, I'm looking for Barbara Dulligan. And, excuse me, Barb, if I've mispronounced your last name. Barb's the coordinator for Elementary Gifted and Talented Programming, and she'll be introducing our coordinate recognition for our Continental Math Award winners. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to come to see the board because I'm always recognizing students, so what could be better? So, thank you for inviting us. Continental Math is a national math problem-solving contest, so it's word problems. And they're really quite hard, and there's only, there's three, for third grade, there's three tests of six problems. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but let me read you one of the questions. This is what they might have gotten this year. Cans of soup can be purchased in packages of three for $0.98. Individual cans of soup cost $0.35 each. Polly purchases 10 cans of soup using as many packages of three as possible. How many did, how much did she pay for the 10 cans? Now, we all know that all of us hopefully would be able to eventually figure that out. But these are third graders, and so you can hear the multi-step that's involved in that. And so, it's very difficult to get high scores in this. So, the two students that I'm going to introduce tonight, got out of the total possible 18 points, they received 17. So, that means they only missed one problem in three tests, which is awesome. So, first, we have from Oak Grove Elementary, in Mrs. Gobick's class, we have Catherine Barato. Come on up, Catherine. And from Ridgeview Elementary, with Ms. Chow, Melinda Chow, as his teacher, we have William Moeen.
For moms and dads, don't be afraid to get a little closer if you need to for your pictures.
Oh, you wanna get over for your, okay, there you go. I actually have it down. I actually looked up the solution, so I didn't have to go through it. The answer was $3.29, for those of you who've been madly scrambling. I did just want to take this opportunity again to thank you for the board's support for our Gifted and Talented Program. We're very excited about the things that we offer our kids in Bloomington, and we couldn't do it without your support. So, thank you very much.
That wasn't so bad, was it, guys? All right, next up, we have our district-wide food drive. The annual district food drive was held on April 28 through May 2, and it was another successful year. I'm looking for Board Member Rick Oliva and Linda Batterson, who's the current PTSA Council President, to introduce the award recipients. And the Veep representative, well, if we have a representative from Veep, come on up.
You know, so, with the food drive, one of the important things to remember about school and curriculum in general is that the curriculum isn't just the math class, it isn't just social studies, it isn't just the test. One of the important things to understand about the curriculum is it's the entire experience of life throughout your kindergarten through your 12th grade in our schools. So, that's what we consider to be the curriculum here. Part of that is teaching our kids to become good citizens. And what better way than to have a food drive where we help the rest of the community that maybe is struggling, where the kids, they don't get a grade, they don't get credit for doing it, they're just doing it because it's a good thing, it's the right thing to do. And so, we're building that intrinsic value instead of the extrinsic, where you necessarily would get an award, or you'd get a ribbon for doing it. Now, we are giving away awards for the students that generated the most, but that isn't the focus of the food drive. The focus of the food drive is Veep goes through about 10,000 pounds of food a week, a day. So, when we can raise 60,000 pounds or 70,000 pounds of food, that means we've fed the community for a week. So, that's a wonderful thing, and so, we'd like to congratulate all of the students in our district for all the hard work that they did. And then Linda will give you a little bit more of the specifics.
Linda Batterson, PTSA Council President, outgoing president, and thank you, School Board, and Les Fujitaki. The Bloomington 15 Public Schools, Early Childhood Center, Central Departments, and Business Partners, we had seven of them, I believe, Avtech, AXA Advisor, Highland Banks, Normandale Chiropractic Center, Star Choice Credit Union, Thermo King, and Toro, they all participated in the food drive with partnering up with schools. All of the food and cash were donated to the volunteers enlisted to assist families and individuals in Bloomington, Edina, and Richfield, Veep. And Bloomington Public Schools and their business partners collected 12,212 pounds of food and 9,658 in cash during its sixth annual district-wide food drive. The total collection of 60,502 pounds fell just short of last year's 67,020 pounds, but the school food collection alone, the collection for all the actual food, was 11,504 pounds, which was increased by 25% over last year's sum. This year's total includes non-perishable food goods and the conversion of cash to donations to pounds. For each dollar donated, about five pounds of food can be purchased. Jefferson High School had the highest combined total of food cash, food and cash, collected with 438 pounds in food and $3,254 in cash, for a total of 16,709 pounds. Ridgeview Elementary collected 2,308 pounds of actual food to earn this year's school honors for pounds of food collected, while Jefferson had the highest total of cash raised. And I don't know, I see Steve's here, and I see Ellen's here, and I think, Steve, if you guys wanna come up.
Defer to my staff.
There we go. Just to say, congratulations, and I think a big round of applause goes to them.
We've got a miniscule presentation, is this a good time to?
You could do that quickly, and then I wanna invite Veep to come up to have a few words, so, just to let you know that.
So, Mrs. Palm and I, we kind of were just the facilitators of the whole food drive for our fourth and fifth grade DA classes, and they really took it and ran with it. They did everything from planning the posters to the daily promotion and the news that we did every morning in our school, counted the food, weighed it, and all kinds of things. They did it all because they wanted to. There was no incentive, there was no, the class with the most food wins a pizza party or anything like that. And so, the kids kinda did a really short clip to show you what they learned.
I'm not sure that they do.
There we go.
We tried to make it very short, but...
Ridgeview DA, on why we thought it was important to do the food drive.
Happiness.
Kindness.
Donate.
Teamwork.
Awareness.
Team.
Grow.
Smile.
Giving.
Difference.
Giving back.
People.
Essential.
Better.
Leader.
Give.
Support.
Fun.
Kindness.
Helpful.
Smile.
Helpful.
Teamwork.
Strength.
Nice.
Thank you.
Support.
Helpful.
Struggle.
Give.
Community.
Supporting.
Teamwork.
Community.
Working together.
Giving back.
Thankfulness.
Making a difference.
Helping.
Helping.
Giving back.
Giving.
Helping others.
Smile.
Happiness.
Teamwork.
Community.
Helping.
Altruism.
Veep.
One thing that's significant about this food drive that is different than the other food drives in which we've been involved in, at least in my stay at Ridgeview, is that there was no reward. The only reward that they had was, they knew that they were giving back in a meaningful and an important way, which we, it's hard to sometimes organize that for kids, to have them do that. But, this was an opportunity for them to be able to give back to the community that has given them so much. They're very aware that they are here in this program because of the good graces of the people in Bloomington, of the Board of Directors, and they wanted to make sure that their contribution was something that was substantial. And so, that's why it was really important for them to do so. As they tried to encapsulate their, what was important, try to get 50 very, very bright kids to narrow things down to one word, it's quite a task. But, we have back there the one sheet of paper that each student was able to contribute that was in the video as well. We'll go ahead and leave that up, just in case you need a little bit of artistic enlightenment in your board meeting. But, thanks again very much.
And then I wanna welcome Jefferson up here, Ellen Berkowitz. You're gonna have to introduce yourself, because I'm not even sure.
Good evening. I'm Justin Hall, Assistant Principal at Jefferson High School, and honored to be here tonight, and wanna take the opportunity to introduce our Student Council Co-Presidents, Ellen Berkowitz and Stephen Hand.
Well, thank you guys so much for being great supporters of Veep. It's probably one of my favorite organizations in Bloomington, so I love any opportunity that we have to support it. And we come from a little bit of a different angle than the elementary schoolers. We, there is a bagel reward for the first hour that wins, that brings in the most food and money total. So, sorry, but we do, high schoolers need a little bit more motivation sometimes.
Yeah, and I just wanna thank you guys all again for your support. This year, we've had just an outrageous amount of school spirit, and it's shown through sporting events, it's shown in the classroom and the hallways, and I think this is just another prime example of our school spirit coming through, that the kids in our school got really excited about it, and anytime there's a competition, I guess they all really wanna win, and it showed this time, so, we wanna thank you guys.
And I believe, Ellen and Stephen, are we gonna see you guys at City Council next week? And then Ridgeview, will you also have?
Awesome.
Awesome. Great, thanks. Well, now, I wanna invite Pamela Page up from Veep, just to say a few words.
All right. Thank you, Linda. So, on Veep's behalf, I would really like to thank Linda Batterson and the PTO for their efforts with the food drive, Rick Kaufman and his team for the promotion and the coordination, Les Fujitaki and the members of the School Board for your support with this, and to the school principals, the staff, the student leadership, for getting behind this initiative to Jefferson High School and Ridgeview Elementary in particular, for showing what it goes to go above and beyond and be an example of what it means to build community. Veep is really fortunate to have such a wonderful advocate of the Bloomington School District, and your effort in collecting over 60,500 pounds of food is outstanding. I'd like to share a little bit about what Veep does with your donations to impact the community in just one given month. And this is what took place in April. So, Veep in April served 8,345 individuals through the food pantry. This is an all-time record, so over 253,644 pounds of food went out those doors. One of the really important things to consider is when we look at that figure, we average over 8,000 individuals every month, but 40% of the people walking through our doors are children. One other thing to emphasize is that, and that's something that we're really proud of, that comes from our partnerships, is 50% of the food now that's walking out of that door is fresh produce. And so, the individuals who are coming are getting good, healthy food that enforces brain development and learning and those kind of things, so, very excited to report that. Since we've moved into our new building, many of you have been a part of that and that move and supported us in that, we are averaging five pounds more of food for every family that walks through that door. And five pounds of that food is fresh food, it's because we can handle that now more that comes in from the grocery stores, so exciting news on that front. Also, in that given month of April, 152 holiday meals were cooked and supplied, driven by Veep volunteers to homebound shut-ins on Easter Sunday. We worked with the Student Hunger Collaborative, providing 110 students with 750 pounds of food to go home. That was only two distributions, because there was spring break. We sent birthday bags home to 160 kids, and our NEET program, our new program where we repurpose food, saved 432 pounds of bananas that would've went to waste, and they were turned into 355 loaves of banana bread. So, again, community, volunteers coming together, doing the work, using food, perfectly good food, to give to hungry people in need in our community. And, not to keep you too much longer, but I have to highlight too, that there's a transportation program, so 775 rides provided, and there's a social services program, and so 106 households received advocacy services, gas, bus cards, financial assistance, those kinds of things. And so, as we look to the coming months, what we can look forward to is next month, in June here, our youth food program will kick off. Breakfast and lunch items will go home for students who would have otherwise received them through the free and reduced lunch program. And then in July, our backpack program, full of loaded supplies for over 5,000 children, will go home, and then school starts all over again. So, again, just thank you to the students, everyone, and particularly your wisdom in seeing the value of these community-building activities, and also in getting the word out that there's a seed planted out there, that if they're bringing food into the food shelf, hopefully those students are also knowing that the food shelf is a place that they can come if they need resources too. So, thank you.
I just wanna quickly thank my PTSA Council. It's been a great three years, I'm all done. This is my last hurrah. So, I need to thank Karen Cook as my Vice President, Betsy Longley as my Secretary, and Bonnie Berry for Treasury help. And this year, we have a whole new exec board with Karen Cook leading as President, and she will be taking over, I think, well, officially tomorrow, at our breakfast appreciation. So, thank you to everybody, it's been a fun ride. I think my kids graduate, my two twins, in a few days, so we'll see. But, thanks to all.
Thank you all for coming, appreciate the contributions. Now, we get to the point on our agenda, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak to the Board on an item that is not on this evening's agenda? I'm not seeing anybody raise their hands. Do we have any 12th grade government students out there that are wishing to get a late credit in? I'm seeing a finger pointed at Mr. Abrahamson. I'm assuming you have those credits in. All right, we're, we move on to Part A agenda, we're looking for a motion to approve as-is.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any conversation? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'm gonna turn my page and move to Part B. First thing up on Part B is the adoption of the music curriculum, grades K through 12. And Tim Anderson's gonna come up and help us along with that. Do you have somebody?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 adopts the music curriculum for grades K through 12, effective with the 2014-15 school year.
All right, moved and seconded. Mr. Anderson, what have you got for us?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Superintendent, members of the Board, Cabinet members, viewing audience, and special guests, it's my pleasure to introduce tonight to you our music adoption, grades K-12, and in a moment, its architects, who are told to be here at 7 o'clock. Over the past two years, the K-12 Music Steering Committee has assessed and revised the district's K-12 music curriculum. The new curriculum incorporates revised Minnesota State standards into a vertically articulated in what we believe to be a well-balanced program. This curriculum has been reviewed and is supported by the district's Curriculum Advisory Committee, K-12 Principals, the Office of Educational Equity, and is indeed recommended for adoption by the K-12 Music Committee. As I said, in a moment, you're gonna hear from our teacher leaders, representatives from that very committee, who are here to highlight some of their work. Now, a big thank you to this group, as you can see them enter, for they do, in addition to their regular teaching assignments, this teacher leader work. Teacher leaders are often unrecognized or underappreciated for the work they do outside of the heroic heavy lifting they do, teaching children. So, in a moment, you'll get to hear from those folks, as they served in this capacity over the last couple of years. Now, our process, as you know by this point, is facilitated by our very capable curriculum coordinators, there happen to be two of them here now. Please welcome Elida Kane, Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, and Jessica Rice, Secondary Curriculum Coordinator. And without further delay, I'll turn it over to them to introduce the fine points of this curriculum adoption.
So, we'll kick it off with talking about our K-12 music mission statement. This mission statement was created last year in our first year of the steering process. And the mission of the K-12 Music Education Program in Bloomington Public Schools is to provide a high-quality sequential and comprehensive music education for all students to foster independent and collaborative musicianship, as well as a lifelong appreciation of music.
Our elementary steering team consists of Fred Ballou, who's the Grade 5 instrumental music instructor, he teaches at all 10 of our elementary schools, Megan Shelton from Oak Grove Elementary, Ray Topsher from Valley View Elementary, Kelly Urico from Washburn Elementary, and Rick Oliva has joined us many times from the District Curriculum Advisory Committee.
And the secondary steering team is made up of Brian Blessing from Oak Grove Middle School, teaching choir and some general music courses, Kelly Heckman, who supports Oak Grove instrumental music programming, as well as the 5th grade music program, Nikki Goulet-Jordan, who's at Kennedy High School, teaching mostly the choir programming, Jeff Levine at Jefferson High School, working mostly with instrumental, Karen Powers from Valley View Middle, working with orchestra and some general music, Dan Gopper at Olson, working mostly with instrumental, and Rick Oliva was our DCA member for the last couple of years as well, and then I steer the committee. So, our prioritization process is similar to what you probably saw in art a couple of weeks ago, but we start with prioritizing the standards to create a guaranteed and viable curriculum. State benchmarks are prioritized to one of three levels, essential, important, or enhancing, and Elida will get into that in a moment. Music representatives met to reach consensus and selected a manageable number of standards as essential and important, and to create vertical alignment throughout the grade levels.
As just mentioned, we prioritize them into the three different levels. Essential would be skills that all students must learn, and the assessments are going to be common. Our important skills are ones that students will learn and they'll also be assessed, but that might look a little bit different, building to building. And the enhancing standards, our students will learn, and assessing will happen as time allows. I'm gonna invite a few members of our elementary music team to join us right now. I have Rick Ballou, Megan Shelton, and Kelly Urico.
I'll start out by talking about the big three. These were the three things we focused mainly on when planning our curriculum. They were for the elementary. We looked at windows and mirrors, which is music in the culture, we'll talk a little bit about that, 21st century skills, which is very important, especially now with the one-to-one thing that we're hoping to work towards with technology, and finally, backward design to develop assessment for the new standards, and we are working closely with the Purbridge Center in order to come up with what could end up being a pilot program for other people to use in the state.
As Rick mentioned, the Purbridge Center's kinda coined the phrase during our work with them, windows and mirrors, and that being said, we wanted to make sure this curriculum was fully inclusive of the student population that we teach and reach, and that they be able to see representation of not only their cultures, but the cultures that they come across, just through interactions with other students and staff.
To talk more about the 21st century skills, prepare for the upcoming technology resources that will be available to our student population. We thought about how we can use these resources to help the students appreciate and learn more about music, also, how the new technology will help students understand the role of music in their future, and we wanted to make sure that our curriculum was teacher-friendly, efficient, and not a burden to the teacher when working with the technology. We're fairly certain we found a...
We're fairly certain we found a pretty good curriculum that will be able to do all of that, and it's a pretty neat technology program that Megan will get into a little further.
During the curriculum review process, it was important to us, too, that our standards be aligned with Minnesota state standards and national standards, so that we weren't reinventing the wheel, so to speak. We were enhancing it. We wanted to also make sure that our curriculum was accessible to all 10 elementary schools with respect to time constraints and student population and individual workload. As Rick stated, and as Megan's going to get into, we're pretty excited about the connections that we have and the opportunities found in this new curriculum. So I'll let them speak to that a little bit more.
For the last few years, we've had some common assessments in the music, elementary music area. We focused on reading rhythms and melody, and we're proud to be leaders in this idea that across the district, if students move from building to building, that they're going to be continuing where they left off at their previous school. So even though we vary very much with our student population and our contact time, we have a few things that we've all decided the last few years that these are essential, and we've been developing some assessments to go with that. In addition, we have found this new resource, it's called Quaver Music, and we're very excited. It has some already created assessments, that some of them fit just beautifully into our own standards, and we're excited to use this. In addition, there are many cultural resources and many videos, and it's just a wonderful resource. We're excited about what that will be, that we can all use across the district and have more common items.
So I'm going to invite my music teachers up to join me. We have Kelly, Nikki, and Brian. And quickly speaking to the rest of our secondary process that's similar but a little different than elementary, is we chose the Minnesota standards for the arts. We chose our standards from there and prioritize them for each course. And the teachers are continuing to develop a scope and sequence that will articulate exactly what level of proficiency at each grade level, since we do have similar standards across grade levels, but we want to articulate what level of proficiency at those different grade levels. So teachers are continuing to work on that. And I'll have them speak to the strengths of the program.
I would like to speak on the fact that Bloomington has so many students involved in music, and it's such a wonderful opportunity for them to participate. In the high schools, we have 350 to 400 students in music. In middle school, music is a requirement, and so all students take music, whether it be general music, choir, band, or orchestra. In 5th grade, all 5th graders are required to take a band or orchestra instrument. So we have 750 to 800 5th graders learning an instrument, and that's a very unique and wonderful program. It's not very common in Minnesota, but a lot of us really truly believe that that's one reason why our instrumental programs are so great, and another reason why we have so many students involved in music.
Absolutely. We also have a wide variety of musical opportunities for students in performing ensembles and in general music classes as well, and that represent a wide, diverse amount of music, and try to present it always in authentic ways, whether that's the choirs singing in foreign languages, singing pieces from Asia, from Africa, South America, singing music in authentic languages, working with the Office of Educational Equity, trying to make our performances as authentic as possible, incorporating world instruments as well, and giving students just a wide variety of cultures that they can access through their music. We also have a lot of elective and extracurricular opportunities at the middle school and the high school level that can support our traditional ensembles. So programs like our musical productions that we do at all the middle schools and high schools, programs like our jazz bands that we have, programs that get kids out of bed at 6:30 in the morning to be able to come into school early every week and perform, or be able to stay after school. And they may not participate in other activities, but that music activity is the one they look forward to every week, and it keeps these kids involved and keeps them practicing and keeps them working and learning.
In addition to all the great musical musicianship skills we're teaching, we're fostering lifelong skills, leadership, self-responsibility, reliability, what it means to be part of a team, knowing how what you do impacts the rest of the ensemble. And I think that's just as important as the musicianship skills that they're learning. And we're also really proud of the links that we've created to the community via our ensembles. We are in our second year of Bloomington Gold at Kennedy, and this year, we had 285 volunteers that came and helped get that event up and going. Thirty-five of the 285 were current parents. The rest were alumni, parents, families, students. And it was just remarkable to see that all come together in one day.
So finally, our next steps for the music program is to look at aligning the curriculum with 21st century demands and skill sets. This is for both elementary and secondary. Continue to look at curriculum materials that will enable all educators to transition easily into a new course description, standards, et cetera. And then we'll be looking at designing common assessments, K-5, using the backward design in collaboration with Purpatch Center resources. So that will be with the K-5 programming. And secondary, we'll also create common essential standard assessments during the next school year. So at this time, we welcome any of your questions to what you heard here. Thank you, guys.
We can just stand up.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
I thought they were going to sing. Taking the photo.
You could sing if you like. Anyone have any questions? Yes, no?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for all the hard work you do. You know, I've been through several of your musical performances, everything that you have done with the kids is just amazing. And as you talk about the talent that we have in the students in Bloomington, we should also talk about the talent that we find in the teachers in Bloomington. You know, you are the representation of that talent. Whatever the kids are doing, it's you, and I know you're doing an amazing job. So thank you for doing that. And my question is, well, the curriculum, it's always looked good. It looks good, you know. I'm very confident that it's, you're always going to do the best, and you're always going to do a good job. But my question is, in the past, there have been some concerns about maybe whether or not you had, or your students had, the right tools in order to be able to develop and to go through the curriculum. So in the past, it was, you know, the instruments, more specifically. And I just wanted to ask you, what does it look like right now? And what are some of the challenges that you think you might be facing right now, or you will see coming? And I don't know, maybe as a school board, how can we continue to support the music program?
With having every 5th grader play, what we have, Kelly and I have, and Sandy, who's not here, but what we've noticed over the past few years is there's a greater number of students who need to get a hold of school-owned instruments. Our entire budget for repair and replacement comes from the rental fees that are from the children, which, over the years, more and more need the instruments and less and less can pay. Right now, we're still, for the most part, breaking even with our repairs, but we have not been able to do replacement in a number of years. And so our instruments are getting older, and they are getting, to the point where they're harder and harder to repair. I'm phrasing that as nicely as I can. What would be great is we have money coming now with the curriculum, and we're hoping to throw some instruments onto that, but like if we're just spitballing here, maybe occasional funding towards the instruments, because as of right now, we have no budget in any building. Our budget comes strictly from the instrumental rental fees. All that we're provided is the 2.5 of people teaching it, which is great. Don't get me wrong, we love that, but budget.
I'll just add to that. Last year, when we had 800 5th graders, we had 400 students with school instruments. This year, we had 750 5th graders, and even more students needed school instruments, and more and more students are not paying.
And that was up 50 from the previous year.
Right. And we are having a hard time paying our repair budget, let alone replacing instruments that, as a teacher of beginners, I would want to present to the beginners with the best instrument we possibly can give them, to start them off on the right foot. And right now, we have some instruments that are duct taped and taped together, and that is a big issue. So I will leave that there, and if anyone else wants to comment on what they see.
We also see a little bit of that at the middle school level as well, students that are looking for school instruments more, and I think our district budget, you know, with seeing close to 800 students, I think our budget is around $800 from the district, so roughly a dollar or so per student, which is difficult considering one piece of choral music is $1.75, $2.00 or things, and let alone instruments. And so we are, through renting instruments out to students, students that are able to pay for them, that does go to help to repair anything. But when you have instruments that are 40 or 50 years old, that have had a lot of use on them, there are times where we say, okay, this, as Rick was saying, this can't be fixed anymore, it can't be adjusted. And instruments like saxophones, you know, are about $1,100 to purchase one, which is more than our entire annual budget. And so it just becomes difficult to be replacing a lot of instruments that we should have as a department. And so luckily, we're supported with our curriculum revision, but any way that, you know, we're able to conduct some fundraisers and things. Oak Grove does a program called the Practice-a-Thon, which was able to raise about $2,300 this year, which is great. But it seems like we're having to reach more and more out to parents to be able to help provide for our program. So as the school board's able to hop out financially at all with any sort of instrument replacements, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Now, you were asking about one more challenge that we foresee happening in the near future. Well, I think it's great that all the kindergarten will all be offered to everybody. It presents an interesting challenge in buildings that are already maxed out with respect to space, because not necessarily my room at Washburn is on, you know, on the chopping block for that. But there have been other music teachers who have been moved or displaced, or their rooms have become smaller, and it's going to be an interesting challenge in the future to provide service for everybody and preserve the integrity of the programs, both for kindergarten and for people that are being moved and shifted. So we see that as a challenge, but one that can be dealt with, of course.
Because we're not complaining. We're not, we're not.
Jim?
What's the percentage of vocal music versus instrumental music?
At Kennedy, it's double. Twice as many singers as there are instrumentalists.
How about the middle schools?
It changes from grade to grade. We see more 6th graders involved in the instrumental music classes, and then by 8th grade, more in the vocal program.
Because of the musicals and the great examples that they have at the high schools, they want to join that wonderful group. So is that required at the middle school?
Music is in some form, yes. And so we have choir, band, and orchestra, and since we did our last curriculum revision, we've also added in our general music classes in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade at Oak Grove. Valley View does as well. Olson, depending on the year and how many students register, it fluctuates. In the general music classes, we started a guitar program when we did our last curriculum revision, and also do a lot on computers with GarageBand, a program made by Apple, which are great tools. And we're reaching students that we wouldn't normally reach through band, choir, and orchestra, students that don't want to perform in that, those type of ensembles. And we've seen those kids really thrive in these classes and go off to the high schools, which both high schools now, over the last six, seven years now, do offer GarageBand classes and guitar classes separately, and as far as I know, those classes are full.
They are, and it's cool because it's a completely different group of kids. When I was told that I was going to be teaching GarageBand, I was...
Excited?
Excited. Excited and a little apprehensive because I'm a choral director. I love it. I have a section every try, they're full. It's a, like I said, it's an entirely different population of kids, but it's also great to see them get to utilize a different side of their brain and to see that creation process. And they're much more apprehensive about sharing work than like my show choir kids would be, duh, they always want to be in front of a light microphone, you know? These kids aren't like that. So it's great.
Well, historically, we've just always appreciated all the musicals at the high schools and the concerts at the elementary schools, you know, it's so much fun to see the kids doing that. And like you say, the biggest problem seems to be maintenance of the instruments, especially, you know, the voices are okay, because they can always maintain those. But the maintenance of the instruments, at what point do they rent or buy the musical instruments themselves? I mean, obviously, there's some families that can afford to do that, and so that relieves a little bit of the pressure for...
I would say that varies on the family, but you would assume if a student has started in 5th grade and continued into high school, most students by high school would own their own instrument unless it's a tuba, or a Barry Sax, or a more obscure instrument that's more expensive. So high school needs more different instruments, like the contrabass clarinet for a specific piece, but most of the students would own their own instrument by then.
Do we have any harpists?
I have a 6th grade harpist. She played with the orchestra at their concert.
Yes.
We don't teach that.
Taking their own lessons.
$10,000.
Hand her dad and her brother to carry it in.
That's right, yes.
It was her mom.
So are there currently students that aren't able to afford the rentals that are being denied instruments? Or do you see that...
No, we find an instrument somehow, whether...
If things progress with it going, do you see that happening if the budget isn't corrected? Or...
Yes, definitely. I think, definitely in 5th grade, because we are running out of instruments. We gave away, well, not gave away, we loaned every violin this year, almost every trumpet, saxophone.
Every saxophone for the past...
Percussion kit. I mean, we don't have anything left on the shelves anymore.
Over time, this could become, this could become an issue. The lady we work with, Sondra Wagner, remembers a time when people would share instruments. We will make the program work. The issue is to what level it will be. If it turns into you get the instruments on weekdays and you get the instrument on weekends, that's not going to be a great situation.
No.
But so far, so good, but in the future, we may encounter problems.
So you think it's probably a year or two before this becomes a critical issue?
Probably.
At most? Okay, thank you.
Could you talk about the windows and mirrors? I heard you talk about it at the Curriculum Advisory Committee meeting, but I thought it was so cool that you could maybe share it with the rest of them.
Well, we are fortunate amongst the elementary population to have two very authentic sets of culturally, yeah, instruments that reach out beyond Bloomington borders. We have purchased a set of Japanese tyco drums, and all of us were fortunate to have training with that to some extent. And then we also had an artist in residence here for a number of years who would teach us Indonesian gamelan, and we owned both of those sets. They go traveling throughout Bloomington during the year. And I'll never forget this. I had an Asian student come in, and he hadn't been at Washburn very long, and he came in my room the day that the gamelan was set up, and his face lit up. He said, "Ah, I know this. Can I share something?" And it was just so amazing to see that connection that he had, and he was instantly comfortable, and it allowed him to become an expert, too. And I think all of our kids are looking for chances to share and be experts in their culture and share that with other kids sitting right next to them. So we can provide that in a musical way, which seems to be such a natural and instinctive way to share culture. That's really what we're striving to do with this new curriculum, is provide that cultural connection.
Any other questions? Any comments? I just, I want to say thank you for all the energy and the effort that you've put into this. I know that, I grew up in a family that emphasized choir, so from little tiny, I don't think I could see over this table, to where I am now, I sang in a choir. So I understand the, sort of the language of music. So, and I appreciate it. I appreciate what you guys are doing. I had a lot... music. So, and I appreciate it. I appreciate what you guys are doing. I had a lot of fun. And Megan, yes, I got your name right.
Yes.
I met you Monday at the spring concert.
Yes.
And thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
Thank you for staying afterwards. I was a little torn. Do I talk to you or do I help pick the chairs up? But I think Megan and I closed the concert down. It was kind of fun. We were over at Oak Grove and watched the fifth grade kiddos play. And they played their instruments well, even if they did have some duct tape on them. So, I appreciate what you guys are doing and really just keep up the good work. And let us know, it's a two-way conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, do you right now?
We need to move.
Yes.
Call the question.
All right. So, all those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's good. Like that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Nicole Goulet Jordan left before she had a chance to plug Friday nights.
Oh, Rhythm and Gold.
Saturday nights, Rhythm and Gold concert that they're having. So, I'm going to do it for...
All right.
Y'all come. At Kennedy High School, the Rhythm and Gold concert.
Is it seven o'clock start?
Yes.
All right. We have, next item on Part B is the school board goals. Would like to read this one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves its goals for the 2014-2015 school year as per the attached.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. So, for the folks that are seated in the audience tonight and those that are watching at home, I won't read these out to you, but I think we can make them available in digital form online. The board has gone over forming goals. We started the conversation in January, and we worked through a series of board meetings, a couple of retreats, a study session, and come up with what we think are doable goals. And this last, the sheet that we have, that we all have in front of us, is one that should be all of what we have agreed upon. Does anyone see any changes from the last time we put this together? All right, any conversation before we go ahead and vote on this one?
I'm just a question. So, if these goals are approved, will they be put on the website? Question from Mr. Poochata.
Yes, yes, they will be.
Okay, because I've seen that on other districts, they have the school board goals, so I was curious about that.
It should probably reside next in the school board page or close to where our wonderful pictures are.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Why don't, why don't we just read them? I'll just read the goals, the five goals that they are, just to give everybody an understanding.
Sure.
Goal number one, establish and implement a board professional development evaluation plan. Goal number two is to develop a plan to review and maintain policies at a minimum of every five years. Goal number three, create a pathways advisory committee. Goal number four, to review and update the school board's community education plan, engagement plan. And goal number five is establish an annual school board legislative plan. And as the chairman indicated, this, they will be up on the website with particular timelines and action plans and strategies, so that anybody curious about it can find it on that, in that location.
All right, thank you. All right, we move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, number three on our Part B is superintendent initiatives.
Mr. Chair?
Don?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves superintendent initiatives for the 2014-2015 school year as per the attachment. Second.
All right. And what we're doing here is, as a part of our board goals, setting goals, we wanted to make sure that we had goals for the districts and the superintendent. And what we're doing with this particular resolution is calling a goal and initiative. For those of you that don't yet have the opportunity to read this, this will be online as well. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, and just for clarification, may I read the...
Yes, you may.
The superintendent's initiatives. Initiative number one, maximize student achievement and eliminate the achievement gap. And then, there are several minor, or I shouldn't say sub-initiatives and projects that go into that one. Goal number two, develop educational programs in response to research, best practices, and market conditions. And then, there are some strategic directions and projects to be incorporated into that initiative. Number three, to provide meaningful staff, development for all staff, including competency with diverse populations. And there are several initiatives and projects under that particular initiative. Number four, strengthen partnerships that expand learning opportunities and enhance our image. And some of the strategic plans are pathways and strengthen partnerships with the city and county and projects. And number five is increase the funding base and maximize use of existing resources. And that talks about our long-range financial plans as well as referendum and budget adjustments, too. So, all of those will be on there, but at least that gets it on the record as what the superintendent's initiatives are tonight.
All right. And these initiatives were developed in conjunction with board goals as well. Any conversation? All right, let's move to the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I would just like to make one quick comment, just say thank you to my coworkers, to the district, to administration for hanging in there with us, for working these out. It's been a while since we've had, been able to give the district something to chew on. So, I'm thankful and I'm proud of the work that the board has done in this respect. So, thank you all. All right, then we move to number four on Part B. Who would like to read that one?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Maureen.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a consulting services agreement with Teamworks International, Inc. to facilitate a series of five professional development retreats with the school board scheduled June 2014 through June 2015. The total cost for these services is not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Second.
All right, this is, the board has been using, along with the district, consulting service called Teamworks International, and they've come in to help us facilitate some meetings. When we get stuck on a conversation, it's sometimes it's helpful to have somebody come in and help guide those conversations. And Teamworks has done a good job in that respect for different parts of the district, as well as the board in our, in our, setting our goals. So, this is a, another opportunity to take advantage of Teamworks. One of the reasons that we're putting these five dates down is that, as you would imagine, this particular company is busy and it's kind of hard to nail them down for dates. So, we're wanting to get some dates down in there. Any conversation, any comments? All right, we move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, we're moving into the fun part here. We're doing some policy review. We'd like to read this first one. Don?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District approves the second reading of revised policy 203 board sessions. Second.
All right. Doesn't appear that any more changes have been made? Does anyone, yes.
Can you make some comments, please? Okay, board policy 208, titled Board Policies, was recently approved by the board. That policy defines how the board maintains and updates, establishes and maintains its policies. The policy requires any kind of updating of a policy, two readings by the school board. The first reading was done back on May 12th, and for policy 203, which is titled Board Sessions, minor changes were suggested to the policy, just, I think, some changes as far as the board packet timeline and some other minor changes were recommended. They've been incorporated into the draft that's in front of you, and this is a second reading by the board. If the board approves this reading tonight, the board, the changes will be made official, and that will be the new policy.
All right, we have any conversation around this and any questions? Yeah, Rick?
So, I had asked the question because I have read at least three days before, oh, sorry. In letter C under the agenda, it says, "The agenda for a board meeting and/or board study session will be prepared by the superintendent after consultation with the board chair, and all background information will be delivered to board members at least three days before a scheduled board session." I had asked the question because I was a little confused about the three days. It was clarified that this is meant to be three business days, and so, I'm wondering if we should add the word business. So, it would say to board members, at least three business days before a scheduled board session, just to remove any future confusion. I don't have any concerns.
Any conversation?
Sounds like a good idea.
Sounds good to me.
And so, then, to be clear, then, if it's a Monday meeting, the three business days would then get us the packets by...
At least Thursday.
Because Monday would be the day, Friday, Thursday.
And then, an anomaly like today where it's, we're meeting on a Tuesday.
Still Mr. Grant.
Still at the same time.
Yeah, because yesterday was not a business day.
All right.
I have a question. Yeah, in letter D, in recognition of public, is there a suggested amount of time for when people are recognized and are, and come to speak to the board in terms of the limit, time limit?
You know, there really isn't, and I imagine that it would, it would have a lot to do with how many people. I mean, if there's a great big line that goes out into the hall, perhaps the people can get together and share notes so that five of them can come up and one person can speak. You know, you don't want the meeting to, the public comment portion of the meeting to go until 10:30 and then not be able to get into the agenda. So, it would, it would be flexible enough to handle how many people came. Does that help?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I think in the past, when, when that's occurred, you know, a few people have gotten up to speak, and then the chair would ask if someone had something to add other than what had already been said, you know, because when there's a big crowd, sometimes they repeat the same issues. So, you ask for new issues or something like that they brought forward.
You certainly want to be mindful of what people have to say. And, but you're right, if they're coming on the same issue, then, you know, is what was just said, does that cover what you're, what you're thinking?
Are they aware of that prior to the, to the meeting?
If they aren't, they will be made aware of it. If they come, we'll let them know.
It does say in the policy, persons not having, persons not having given prior notice shall be recognized at the discretion of the board chair or majority of the board members present. And so, I take that if someone had read the policy before they got here, they would, should know that it's a chance that they wouldn't be allowed to share their thoughts. I don't know if we need to be, I sort of like it to be vague intentionally like that, just so that way, people don't think there's a, you know, there's a stopwatch necessarily. At the same time, sometimes someone might think that you're playing favorites, but...
Well, I've seen it both ways with the clock going and a packed room. And, you know, it just, like you say, you want to be somewhat flexible. Yeah, Jim?
And then, also, there are, prior request for recognition is desirable by notification of the superintendent or board chair. Sometimes, we've had situations where they have called ahead of time, and they do have a five-minute sermon or whatever that they want to say. And then, in the case of, that we've seen recently with various bargaining groups, when they come, they have one, two, or three speakers. And it's usually after the chair's discretion, and it's each one, five minutes, three minutes, two minutes, recognizing it. There might be a lot of people speaking. So, within that framework, it's controllable that way for the board chair to recognize the time limits as well as the number of people to be recognized.
Yeah, you can just, you can take the pulse and see what, see what it looks like, what it feels like, if there's a lot of people that want to talk.
I did have a question on the need for regulations. On the, sometimes it's a duplication of some of the, some of the wording, but is regulation necessary to have that then?
Have an example, Mr. Sir?
Just individuals wishing to address the board. If the third paragraph on regulations is the same one as D, second paragraph in D. Basically. And then, comments regarding specific employees' activities and so forth, the fifth paragraph down is the same as another one in there. And I don't know if, under regulations, if it needs to be restated or duplicated in regulations as the actual policy.
Is it better to have it in there too much than not enough?
Almost like that, yeah.
Let's hear it, Mr. Attorney.
What's, what's, David?
Learn at council for...
Well, I did have a question on something else, but with the regulations just repeating the policy, there's no harm. But it is verbose, and of course, attorneys love verbatism. The question I had was on Rick's comment on the agenda. I wasn't sure if the board adopted his three business days suggestion or not. Just so you're aware, what happens in statute, you don't count the day of the act, but you do count the last day. So, that would mean the agenda would have to be out on Wednesdays. Because you'd have Thursday, Friday, and Monday, if you're going to go with business days.
Clarification, when you say last day of the act, what do you mean?
Monday was, would be the meeting, so that'd be the last day.
Right.
The day you send out the agenda doesn't count. So, if you sent it out on Thursday, you'd have Friday and Monday, you'd only have two business days.
All right, that's...
Just so you're aware of that.
And in the case of a holiday also, that's not a business day.
That's true.
And so, that might fall in. I kind of favor just giving it three days.
And if anything lands on a Sunday or a holiday, it goes over to the next day. So, if you're going to define it as business days, that typically will mean the agenda has to come out on Wednesdays.
When if we just say three, three days, doesn't that actually mean Friday? Because if you just went literal days, I mean, because that's where my question was, is I said, well, if we look at literal days, Friday at seven, the day before a Sunday at seven, Saturday at seven, Friday at seven, so wouldn't, isn't it actually, we're saying Friday, if we just say three days?
I think we'd be saying Saturday.
Didn't I say Saturday?
Wouldn't it be Saturday if we just said three days?
Friday, Saturday.
Well, because it had to be prior, right?
Yeah.
I get David. So, that's why I'm just... So that's why I'm just confused.
If we want the date for sending out to be Thursday, what should we say?
Should we just say on Thursdays prior to the Board meeting?
You can say that, or you can say two-business days prior to the meeting.
Or you could just leave it three days. That would cover it, right?
Right.
That was, that was why I was asking if the Board had taken up...
I'll go with three days.
There's three days.
All right, is that, you make it three days, Rick? Does that sound good?
Excuse me, yes.
So three days will land us on Thursday?
You count the weekend, then.
I don't want to break any rules or make it any more complicated than we should. All right, so three days would keep this language as is. That's what I'm reading, yes.
Still sounds a little ambiguous. I don't think two-business days would be better, because I mean, you're still going to have that same question. Well, what is that? Does that include Saturday and Sunday? Or not include Saturday and Sunday? So two-business days gets us to Thursday, then we should probably go with the two-business days. Would be my preference.
Can you also define days by 24 hours?
No. First off, I don't care how you do it. I just was pointing out that if you go to business days, it'd have to come out on Wednesday. If you said three days, you'd have, and it came out on Thursday, you'd have Friday, Saturday, and then when it landed on Sunday, it doesn't count, and it goes to a Monday. So you would be on Monday, unless Monday was a holiday, in which case it'd go to Tuesday. So you can do whatever you'd like. I'm just pointing out what...
Is this why lawyers make so much money? Because they can't even decide what day is the day?
Could put a day and time on there, by Thursday at noon.
You could do that, too?
Thursday at seven or whatever.
What does that do to any of the anomalies? I know that our schedules is...
Except when there's Thanksgiving.
Right, yeah. Again, we're trying to sort of iron the wrinkles out of this and the kinks. We're not trying to iron them in.
How about this? When they say we have to post the meeting three days prior to the meeting, whatever that is, we could use the same thing. So what rules do they use for that?
It's not necessarily business days.
Yeah, it's just 72 hours, I thought.
Well, it's not necessarily 72 hours, because you could post it at 11:59 on Thursday.
And it still counts?
Yep. Well, Thursday doesn't count. So anytime on Thursday...
Anytime on Thursday doesn't count.
Doesn't count.
Oh, my gosh. Leave it at three days.
Make it a week. All right, so are we good with leaving it at three days?
What would you say, before the meeting? Try to do it as soon as possible.
Yeah, Jim, one last one.
Yeah, one last thing. And there's always a historical perspective in this. Probably mention. And that we had some of these issues before, were on Thursday, then all of a sudden there were a couple of hot Agenda items that had come up on Thursday. So we had a revised Agenda that didn't make the three-day deadline, but it was acceptable when it was read, you know, at the Board meeting, that it was revised because of these things that had come up on a Friday that we had just, you know, had to have on the meeting. So by having it just be three days, you know, unless emergency, but the three-day for a scheduled Board Session. And there are going to be some exceptions and some things, but a lot of times it's just to make sure that everything is delivered to the Superintendent and Deb so that she can do it on Thursday, have everything ready on Thursday.
Which, if I'm reading this right, is the way it's written here, which is three days before a scheduled Board Session.
I think most people know that says three days. If it doesn't specify business days, they assume it means not-business days. That's what I would look at unless somebody specifically said three-business days. So I don't think we're at a problem leaving it the way it is.
But if you're a nerd like me, and you type in minus three days in SQL Server, it would actually give you Friday instead of Thursday. Yes, that's why I called Deb and said, what do we mean by three days? Attorney says, yeah, but a day isn't a day, because it could be, you know...
Just like it only difference.
Some people will count Thursday anyway, even though we know it doesn't count. Some people are going to say, oh, it's three days anyway. It's Thursday, Friday, Monday. And other people could count the weekend, however they get there, as long as we just say three days. It's fine.
All right.
I just wanted to know what I'm getting here.
Your iPhone only works business days, right?
All right, all those in favor of the resolution as written, which includes the three days, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thanks, Rick. You've had a lot of fun.
All right, this is good conversation I'm glad we had. Now we're moving on to Policy 214, which is second reading of revised policy out-of-state travel by Board Members. Who'd like to read this one?
Mr. Chair.
Maureen.
It resolves that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the second reading of revised Policy 214, out-of-state travel by Board Members. Second?
I'll give that one to Nellie. She wasn't sure if her voice would work tonight, so...
Let's my head to land us now.
All right, any comments, any questions on this one? All right, we move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now we're down to Board Member Reports. Anyone have anything they care to share? Jim?
Mr. Chair, yeah, the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee has met a couple of times. And we met earlier tonight and discussed some more aspects of the evaluation instrument that we used and the results that everybody submitted, and so the tabulation's gone on. And I think at this time, is there, I asked a question, have we scheduled a closed session for the Superintendent Evaluation on June 9?
Oh, we're going to do that.
We have not scheduled one yet or asked for one and approved one. Because I guess at this time, I'd like to do that, Mr. Chairman, request a closed session for one hour before the Board Meeting on June 9. June 9 is going to be a big, big meeting, big Board Meeting, isn't it?
Well, they're all big.
I mean, the recognitions, recognitions for out-of-state, all the activities. But none bigger than the Superintendent Evaluation for a closed session.
There you go. So that's June 9?
At 6 o'clock, June 9.
Right, and that particular meeting, which is the first meeting of the month, is held at 7:00.
Correct.
So unlike tonight's, which started at 6:30. So you're talking 6:00, June 9. Give us an hour to chat before that meeting.
Correct, that's the motion.
Second.
Second, thank you.
All right, we moved in second. Any conversation? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Just to follow up, I'll be sending out a little email to the Board Members then what we'll outline a little bit, what we're talking about.
All right, anyone have anything else to share? Rick?
I was able to attend the Olson Little School Annual Student Awards, where they recognized, I don't remember the exact numbers, but between 70 and 80 students who showed not only high-grade point averages, but they also honored students that showed great leadership skills in particular fields. Could be music, could be track and field, could be just a specific classroom. And so the teachers nominate the kids. Each student came up, received an award, received a medal, and the teachers spoke, you know, said very nice things about them. And so it was a great thing to see the students honored for things that weren't, for achieving high GPAs. And so it was the top 10%, the top 20% of the class, but also just for their leadership skills. So in an academic setting, being honored for things that weren't necessarily just academic, but for character traits. That was a really nice event to be a part of.
Sounds like fun. Anyone else? All right, I'm waiting for other people.
Okay, so last week I attended the Labor Management Committee Meeting, and it was the last meeting of the year, so they were talking about the program and how it went this year, and we're doing quite well. We currently have a surplus of about 1.2 to 1.4 million, and they just finished the open enrollment process, and it went really well. We were able to get more people enrolled in health care and benefits. And also, last Wednesday, I went to the first of our nurse negotiations, and it went pretty well. We got our timetable, or we got our agenda items on there, what we're going to discuss, and we were able to get our next meeting scheduled, which is on June 4. And last week, I was able to go to the end-of-the-year picnic for ECFE. It was, as a parent, my last one. I've gone to like seven of them, so this will be my last one. So it's kind of sad that we're going to those as a parent anymore, now that my youngest is moving on. But it was a great picnic, well-attended. Good to see all the teachers and all the parents coming out. And yesterday, I was actually in the, with ECFE, the Parent Advisory Council, in the memorial parade that goes along Lindell. And I actually saw Deb over there. She was out there with her bag, getting all the candy, I guess.
Throwing water balloons at you.
Throwing water balloons at me, yeah. So we're handing out IC Pops to the kids and information about early childhood to parents. And we're actually honored to have a guest with us. We had one of our new city council members, Dwayne Lowman, was there, and he put on the green shirt and handed out stuff with us, so that was really good. He's a real big advocate for early childhood education. So that concludes my report.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, I've got a few items. As I mentioned earlier, I was able to attend the 5th grade band concert over at Oak Grove Elementary. It was a lot of fun. And they were, at times, they were all together on the same note, and it sounded wonderful. And at other times, they were pre-formal, and you know, even that sounded fun. So also had a chance to attend the final middle school track meet at Jefferson, where all three middle schools participated. And I can't remember the numbers, but there's quite a few kids that participate in that program, and it's a great way to get out, burn off some energy, make some new connections as we transition, those kids transition from middle to high school. And it's just really, really fun to see how that works. Also had an opportunity to attend the 26-year-old Jerry Maloski, or Malosky, I apologize, Scholarship Luncheon, and that was over at the Knights of Columbus, just Thursday, the 22nd. And sat with the Rosens, nice family, nice young man, heading off to college in the fall, and I'm sure he's going to do some good things. Also, let's see, in our next meeting, and that's going to be June 9. Somewhere towards the end of it, I would like to go over just quickly our self-assessment, just sort of a board checkup. And earlier, I had asked my coworkers to just send in thoughts. How do you think things are going? Are you getting what you need from me? Are you getting what you need from the district? How are things going? And I'd like to just kind of summarize those comments. Part of my goal this year as the Board Chair is to offer that opportunity. I wanted to do it three times during the year, but I'll settle for two. So I'd like to do this at our next meeting, and then again, perhaps repeat it sometime in November. It's just a real quick checkup on what I hope to be an ongoing dialogue. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that. And also, I've been talking with the Superintendent and the district and trying to figure out if it would make sense to not have a July Board Meeting. A lot of things happen in the middle of the summer, not the least of which are family plans. Usually, there's only one Board Meeting in July. At least the past two years has been a very slim agenda. And I'm wondering if my coworkers are in agreement, maybe we can move the items on that Agenda either into the last one in June or in the first one in August, which would leave the month of July open. So having said that, does anyone care to make a resolution?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I move that we eliminate the July Board Meeting and move Agenda Items to either June or August.
Second? Moved in second. All right, any conversation?
I guess, is there anything that happens the start of the new school year, you know, from July finances and everything else like that? We don't have to really worry about that, because it's all going to be handled in June?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. That alleviates my concern, so...
Yeah, we weren't just going to cut one out. It was either, whatever information was going to be on that Agenda would be taken care of in either June or August. All right, yeah, done.
I just want to make sure if something comes up between now and then, we can certainly add that meeting back in?
Yes.
Anytime.
Yeah, we have those Mondays available.
Okay.
Never been, never have been on the School Board in a July. I don't know what the meetings are like, so I was just wondering if it's premature to cancel it now. I mean, are we pretty confident that anything that we could do in July, we could do it the 4th Monday in June?
Yeah, those meetings are, I think, purposely held slim. The Agenda is, and they can be moved either June or August, pretty easily.
When is our first meeting in August?
I don't have it...
Is it scheduled right now?
I don't have my calendar in front of me. 9th, 10th, something like that.
5th.
Can't be the...
11, August 11.
There we go.
Oh, yeah, 11.
In the middle of July, we usually go with a Marine party, or I have some sweepboard.
That's right.
Okay, so any more conversation? We go ahead and vote on this. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much for that. And that ends what I have to say. Superintendent?
All right, thank you. The Board will hold a Celebration of Service Reception Award Ceremony on Thursday, May 29. The School Board will recognize long-serving employees who have left or have retired from the district this past year. The reception will start at 5:45 in Oak Grove Middle School Cafeteria, and it's going to be followed by a ceremony which starts at 6:30 PM at the Oak Grove Middle School Auditorium. I want to inform the public that we have three graduations coming up. Jefferson is the first on June 10. And Kennedy will follow on June 11. Ceremonies are to be held at Mariucci Arena on the U of M campus, and they both start at 7:00 PM. The Metro South Adult Basic Education Graduation will be held on June 12 at 7:30 at Olson Middle School Auditorium. And that concludes my report. my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have anything in the other portion of the agenda before we look for that motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right, we'll call this meeting adjourned, and we'll just take two, three minutes if you need to freshen up, and then we'll come back for the study session.
I have to refresh.
Yeah. Not bad. The study session of the Independent School District 271 tonight is Tuesday, May 17th, 2014, and, May 27th, sorry. And it is 8:05 PM. So, first up on the runway here is Pathways to Graduation Advisory Committee. We have Chris Lennox, Eric Melby, and Rick Kaufman.
Ready. All right. Well, thank you, Chairman Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the Board. We are here this evening to share more information with you about the planning and preparation that's going into the Pathways Stakeholder Conversations. In your board package, you should have received two documents. First was a one-page document about the structure and purpose of the stakeholder meetings, and the second was a draft of the stakeholder groups that are being identified for conversation. You might be interested to know that that original draft of the stakeholder list was taken from the same groups we met with this past fall when starting our Levy campaign. Tonight, we want to provide some additional context for these meetings, as well as collect your feedback that you see in any gaps or redundancy that may exist in the current draft list of the stakeholder groups. So I thought we would start, being a little less formal, just with the conversation and take a look at the structure of the meetings themselves. So as we go through this, please ask questions and interject as we go along. If you want to follow along, we're going to be talking from the Bloomington Public Schools Pathways Document, the Structure and Purpose one-pager that was given out. And I'd just start with at the top, the purpose really of these meetings, as we go out to have the conversations, is specific to gathering information about our pathways to graduation. But I would say, this concept can potentially turn into a way to gather ongoing feedback or a consultation loop with stakeholders. Obviously, that ties into the second agenda item tonight, where Rick will be talking a little bit about the Community Engagement Plan. So this is just a piece of that specific to getting information around the pathways. One thing I would mention as we go forward, we will, you'll hear us talking about pathways, stakeholder conversations. I want to assure you that what we do, and in the end, when you select your advisory committee, it will meet all the requirements of world's best workforce. And in Bloomington, we're going to be talking about our vision, our strategic direction of pathways, not world's best workforce, more personalized version of that for us. So there's really, as we see that, two phases of the conversation. As we begin now and work our way into the fall, they're really vision conversations. They're about our pathways work. They're about what we see for students and families, and we're trying to gather information about that. And once we begin in the fall and start into the school year and have implemented some of this, we'll certainly want to be soliciting feedback about strategies for getting to that vision. How is it working? How are things going and collecting information as we go forward? We see the groups really falling in two main categories. You'll see the first we've identified is affinity-based conversation. Those are groups that we feel like we need to go out to. So we're leaving and going to their turf and saying, okay, we want to come to you and we want to ask some questions where potentially the community or families may feel more comfortable. We want to make sure we're finding those opportunities and going out and collecting that feedback and engaging them in conversations. The second, there's a lot of groups that exist within our own organization, inviting people into our schools. So combined perspectives conversations. Examples of them probably fall within the committee or associations that you see on your stakeholder group list. One of the things we have realized is that in order to get large groups of people to come in to see us, we may have to find a compelling reason for them to come in. Asking their opinion is great, but for them to give up their time to come in and really share with us, we may have to offer cookies and lemonade or something, something to get them in the door and really engage them in those conversations. So we're trying to build that into the process and at times where they would be willing to come in and share with us as well. So, another thing I would say, if you take a look or think about the typical meeting structure, what might that look like as we engage people in these conversations? Obviously, we would set up, whether that's an off-site or onsite meeting, and welcome people into a space that would be conducive to having these conversations. We would do a welcome. And this is where, we'll talk a little bit about board members' role, but we would want you to participate in welcoming people into those conversations. That would be done with probably the host of the meeting as well, whether that's off-site or if it were here, potentially it could be myself, one of the cabinet members, a principal, someone inviting them in would help with that welcome, along with a school board member. We then think it will be important for us to present briefly, five minutes perhaps, on pathways to graduation. We're asking people for their feedback on that. We want to make sure they have a good understanding of what it is. We will be putting information out in advance. Some information's already out about it, but we make sure if people were coming to the meeting, they knew where they could access that. And then go through a brief presentation about what pathways to graduation really entails, what it is, and then follow up with conversations and the guiding questions that were on your document. We'd actually start engaging them and what do they think about that? Does it resonate with them? What parts make sense? What parts are they maybe confused by, or do they want some clarification about? And we'd work through that, those guided questions, collecting feedback. And then depending on the group, we would see these going maybe even up to an hour long with some of the groups. If a group was very familiar, that potentially, you know, some of our own staff could move along much quicker. But with a group that would have more questions, we see that these meetings could take, you know, even up to an hour, in some cases, maybe longer. Certainly, we'd be there to facilitate that with them, for whatever amount of time they, they would need. And then, as we go through, you had a chance to look at the draft questions about what we would be looking for as we talked with those stakeholders, to try to get a sense of what they liked, what they, you know, found resonating with them, what confuses them, what that, how they saw themselves and their, their family, their child fitting into that. And really trying then to solicit from them what they saw, some of the key skills and competencies, as well as the milestones along the pathways as students make their way through our educational system. Trying to solicit from them, what are those things that really we want to make sure students, as they make their way through their career, we're measuring and supporting. In the end, what we would wrap that up, the note taker certainly would collect all that information, compile that, and we would intend to be gathering that and giving that back to school board members in kind of regular updates about how the meetings are going and what feedback we're receiving as we make our way through these conversations. We also have been working with Christine Roblesky, Mr. Kaufman, and her are actually putting together a facilitator's guide, some notes, guides for us to be able to do this. What we want to make sure we do is that these, while every conversation probably will have some nuances and be unique, we want to have a standard. I mean, we want to make sure that, that we're getting at those same questions and that it isn't a completely different conversation from one group to the next, but really getting at the nuance, the individual groups' responses to those. So that's all being packaged and put forward. As we have that, we'll certainly be sharing that with you as we, as we move forward. I also want to take a look at the groups, the stakeholder groups. What we will be doing to track these is be using a Google Doc format, and there's really a couple people that will be key in putting this information together. Mary Mooney from Community Education, Brenda Wibbons here at ESC, will be kind of the gatekeepers of making sure all that information is accurate, up to date, and edit that. So we'll provide view access for those of you that want to track along, see the meetings being scheduled, but edit access will be limited to just those two people. We don't want a bunch of things changing and, and things moving too quickly as we go forward to make sure that we're hitting all of the groups that we need to. As we get into this, one of the things that you will see is we're going to be asking you to take a look at all of the different meetings. And it is an example, if you look at the document on the groups, the stakeholder groups that was provided to you, I'll have you look at the committee and associations section of that. And as an example, just to take you through what will start happening, the parent-teacher-student association and PTSA Council actually already has a meeting scheduled for Thursday, August 7th. It is from 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM. Rick Kaufman will be the facilitator of that. Board members, I know, Mr. Bennett, you are the liaison to that group, so assuming you're going to attend, we'd put you on that. Chair Bergstrom, I know you attend most of those, so as a second, we could potentially pencil you into that. I've agreed to be the note taker, and that really then solidifies that particular meeting. Board members, I know you will be interested, but we may have to have you do some arm wrestling because more than two board members at any of these conversations starts to turn into a board meeting. And frankly, people are looking to you to see what you might say. Your role in these meetings, really, we want you to welcome, engage people, be friendly, encourage them to come in, but then listen. Because if you speak, people listen. It's like the EF Hutton, you know, when they speak, and they're going to want to know, well, what do you think? And what do you think? And you potentially can influence conversation. So we'd appreciate you welcoming, listening. The other thing you're going to want to be doing is as you watch the conversation and listen, try to identify people who may be good Advisory Council members for you. Because at the end, we're going to take all the feedback and, and create that council that will advise you on a go-forward basis. So that's a lot of talking at you, but let me pause. And questions that you guys have about the process, the procedure as we go forward, and then certainly, we're going to want your feedback about gaps, redundancy, as we go forward.
Just real quickly, so I have my date right. It was August 11th, was it?
August 7th.
7th.
For the PTSA Council meeting. Yep, 10 to 11:30. And we'll start filling those out. What you got was a static document, just to give you a concept of what it might look like as we fill these out. The Google Doc is live and being filled in as we schedule meetings. What we have learned is that some of our, our formal committees won't actually meet to the fall. Others are more flexible. We can add them in either spring or summer, depending on where they meet. And we really want to make sure, as you saw with both of those types of groups, that we're getting to people when they'll engage us. So we can meet to meet, but sometimes that's forced and they're like, eh, you know, here's my opinion. Can I go home now? As opposed to, yeah, really, I've got something to share with you. And we really want to find those times where, where that's going to be the most beneficial to both sides.
Sure. Jim?
Jim?
Under community, do you have city council or any other agencies or that city or county?
We are ready and willing to put whatever groups you think we need to add to that document. What we thought might be beneficial is to have one place for that information to come in, rather than to sit tonight and try to type it all in for you. If you have thoughts, if you want to get them to Deb Bunkhold, we'll pull them into the document then, and then push that back out so you will have view access and can see what we're adding. But we're open to whatever community groups, like I said, that where this came from is all of the groups, we went out to give them information. all of the groups, we went out to give them information about the levy campaign. We thought it would be as good a time to re-engage them about what we're doing and how we're moving forward. So everyone on this list was someone or a group, groups that we engaged in the fall. If there's, again, some redundancy, some things we can collapse and maybe put some groups together, great. If there's other gap, you know, places that we think we need to add some groups, happy to do that as well.
Yeah, I just think, you know, coupled with city council, but then there's some other daycare centers that, you know, I don't know if there's a citywide association. We've talked about this before, Bloomington Association of Daycare Centers, so that they're always aware of what we're doing in our preschool and everything else like that, so they can tie together too. So that's another one that... I'll let him check on it.
So I came with a whole list, so I'm just supposed to send them over to Deb?
We'll take it.
Okay.
So do you have, do you have an anticipated completion date when you want to have all these meetings held by?
Well, we'll, we want early fall, so what we'd like to do is by October, no, what we really need to do is we'll have all our data coming back in from this spring from our assessments and testing. If you recall, this is taking the place of the annual report. So all of that will come together, we'll give a report on here's how we're performing. As I'm pointing at the wall, our infographic about pathways to graduation, here's how we're going, and here's our plan to get there. So we want to solicit all that, so as we build that plan on a go-forward basis, it creates kind of a cyclical cycle, you know, of communicating our performance, setting goals, moving forward annually.
Okay. Yeah, this is a large list, and I think we're, we are going to have a lot of redundancy because you have people that are in different groups, or you're going to have the same people come to the same meeting, but that's not a big deal, I don't think.
So if I could adjust that, the idea is that, and we appreciate the groups and the ideas that were thrown out, the idea is to get much like a survey, is a representative sampling. So when we talked about the PTSA council, it's not just the council. All PTAs at each of the schools will get an invitation to send at least one, if not two representatives, to that August 7th meeting. And as Chris talked about, it's collecting data that is not coming from any one individual, but collectively, and then what we get is the thematic pieces that come out. What rises to the top through all of these stakeholder meetings? So it's pretty robust, the, the schedule that we are beginning to develop. It may not be that we hit every group this summer and fall, but we are committed to certainly getting as many representatives of the various voices in the community at one of those stakeholder meetings.
Other questions, comments?
I would just add, I did a dry run with the CAC last Tuesday, sorry. And I didn't have the full, you know, Dawn's part of CAC, she wasn't there on Tuesday, but the, the group's always very, we have good, open conversations. So it was interesting running through the questions that, that we had come up with. What they, what I didn't have yet, which would have been beneficial, would be the presentation that we give to groups ahead of time, so I can see where that's really going to be helpful to the, to the groups to kind of frame their thinking around pathways. And then one final addition, because it's part of the world's best workforce, or in our case, Pathways Plan, is our integration plan was, the narrative was accepted last week by MDE, so after some revisions that we did a week or so ago. So that, that, that piece is approved, waiting on the budget feedback from MDE at this point.
So perhaps some work for the board to do now, between now and at least August 7th, would be to think of and, and kind of identify some people that we think might be beneficial to share opinions, see if they have an opportunity to come and listen and be on one of these committees.
So on the groups to meet with, looking through those, if there's any especially that you see missing or opportunities you see for us to combine groups, we'd love that. Also, as board members, starting to look at those groups or, or even in some of your liaisons, putting, putting you and saying, yep, I'm going to be at that meeting, that's the committee I'm connected to, or yep, that's my school, I'd love to be at that meeting. And we'll start penciling all that in as we schedule these meetings and communicating with you. Again, one board member, it'd be great to have, but everyone, not more than two, though. So as you have favorites, you may have to flip a coin or arm wrestle if there's multiples of you that want to go to any particular meeting. We'll try to split those up for you as well as the staff doing them.
Okay, and then our input, we are going to send it to...
You can send it to Deb, then, yep, Brenda Wibbons and Mary Mooney will work to put all of this together.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. A lot of work. Looking forward to starting this conversation. Anyone else have any, anything for them, these three fine young men who are waiting here patiently? All right, anything else for us, gentlemen?
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, as they switch seats here, Rick Kaufman's going to stay and go over the School Board Community Engagement Plan.
So what, first of all, thank you again for the participation last time, giving me the feedback that you had around community engagement. And so what I wanted to do, take a few minutes tonight, is to share with you some background information and then present the draft plan to you. This is your community engagement plan, which you have received a copy, and so for our viewing audience, not so much those behind me, but those watching on TV, I did put together a few slides to go through to give a more broad perspective about community engagement, because that seems to be the terminology that is getting thrown around a lot over the last couple of years. What you charged yourselves with in developing one of your goals was to develop a community engagement plan. And I wanted to outline what really is community engagement, because I, again, I think there's lots of definitions, but it really is very simple. It's a process to involve your various stakeholders in decisions that affect them. Not that they make the decision for you, it's really an opportunity for you to gather insights, feedback, perceptions, beliefs of the various different stakeholders of the group that you serve, which is all of our citizens. It is a commitment to build relationships and to create shared sense of responsibility of an issue and problem. The seven of you are elected by your constituents, and unlike city council, and unlike some school boards that represent either wards or various geographical areas of community, you represent all of our citizens. And as such, you're empowered with making very difficult decisions sometimes. So it is in not only your best interest, but certainly the organizations, for this commitment to build a relationship with those that share that same sense of responsibility. It's an ongoing effort to identify your stakeholders' perspectives and questions about key educational issues. This isn't a one-time effort. In fact, one of the things that I heard repeatedly by some of you in our last session is that we're doing community engagement every day we're in the public, and that is absolutely the truth. Whether you're talking with one person or a small group or a very large group, that's engaging your community. So I wanted to talk a little bit about how this is important in the sense of that it aligns with the district strategic plan, its mission and vision, which at least from the part of Director Bartolado and Director Sorum had a hand in the development of the initial strategic plan, but others that have come on the board since have embraced and endorsed that strategic plan, mission, and vision for your ongoing work. Community engagement, your community engagement, will help you to align the district strategic plan, mission, and vision specifically by these four areas. You will help to raise student achievement. How? Because if you look at one of those vision pieces, it's shared accountability and responsibility by involving parents, business owners, other stakeholders, in identifying those academic goals, standards, resources, measures of progress, all the things that Mr. Lennox talked about with respect to the stakeholders meeting. That is and will be a centerpiece to your community engagement plan as we move forward. It also strengthens the whole student by raising academic achievement, while that is our primary goal. We all know that many of our stakeholders need to pay greater attention to the social and health conditions that are barriers to learning. And that's why we need to have those other stakeholders involved in our conversations. It will strengthen our community and our schools beyond where they currently are, because when school systems engage the community on education issues, the school board can lead people to think and take action in other ways to improve our community's life. And then strengthening representative and participatory government, the board is really engaging its stakeholders that are involved in the public decision-making and re-engaging citizens with their representative voice in education governance. So the purpose of your plan, when I took all of those notes that Deb Bunkhold and I were furiously writing down to try and capture all of the thoughts, and what came to the fore is the, these pieces that I'm going to present to you, what we heard, what we believe is to be the purpose of your community engagement plan. You have a responsibility to understand the needs and desires of this community and its willingness and ability to actively support our children, which is their pathways to graduation. You believe as a school board that such understanding is best gained by direct personal interaction, not just between the board as a whole in the community, but also among community members themselves. And when I get to the chart in a few minutes, I'll explain that more and you'll see what I'm talking about. So the purpose that we've laid out for you, and by the way, this is a draft, this after tonight, we'll, you will have an opportunity to ruminate, consider it, discuss it, and come back in June, make specific revisions, alterations to it that will be your plan. These are words on a piece of paper that we've collected from you and have synthesized and put together for you as a starting point. As such, we believe your purpose needs to encourage collaboration and dialogue with stakeholders. We believe this, the purpose of your plan is to bring community perspectives to the table. We believe the purpose of your plan is to help stakeholders understand the tough choices that you have to make. Sometimes those choices are not going to be, not going to make everybody happy. We are, all of you are aware of certain issues or outcomes that have not been necessarily met by a majority of our community. But this will also, we believe, a purpose to examine how to value that stakeholders' opinions that are either supported or not supported by district policies and programs. It'll be an opportunity for you to inform, educate, and engage your community to help bring understanding and at least some form of collaboration, whether they, our community is in full agreement with you or not. And finally, the purpose of your plan is to provide information to guide you as a board to maintain balance when those stakeholders' values are in conflict. Because again, ultimately, the seven of you are charged with making the final determination on many of those issues that are of governance. So I'm not going to go through these individually, but we did, in putting this together also, again, this is things that I heard from a number of you, and also in my previous work. I think it was Mr. Oliva that had shared with the board some information from the Colorado School Board Association on community engagement, and I think we shared with you that that is my work in my previous school district. I had a lot of association with Colorado school boards, several colleagues of mine in, in developing that. So the community engagement plan beliefs, we believe, your beliefs by adopting the plan eventually and or ultimately is that you collectively believe these statements. And again, if you don't, this is the, this will be the opportunity for you to revise these and change them to best fit your collective ideas. A couple of things, and again, I want, you, you've got the document on page three that outlines the specific principles of community engagement. This is more from our work in community engagement for the last 20 years when preparing to engage your stakeholders, either individually or as a group, you, it's best to identify these areas that we, we call principles. Okay? And again, I won't go into detail, but I think what that does is leads into the final piece, which is the types of engagement. And so let me outline for you, as, as we're putting this together, try and understand that when you talk collectively or individually with your stakeholders, there are four different types of engagement. The first is to inform. This is more of seeking to inform and educate to develop an understanding. We call this the implementation stage. So it's an opportunity, and this is, this is more done on small group or individual basis, when you're sharing information about school district issues or, quite frankly, issues that are at the board table that you're wrestling with. This could be engaging your significant other, this could be engaging family members or others in your circle of friends or associates. It's to seek to inform and educate to develop a better understanding. The other, the next one is consult. This is to obtain feedback on specific issues and long-range concepts. Consultation will be similar to those stakeholder meetings, and I should say the disclaimer here is there will be times when you will be doing all four of these, and in some cases, some of your work will cross over. It doesn't, it's not as true to the form. A third type of engagement will be involvement. You are engaging to ensure concerns are understood and considered. For example, if you had a group, if, as we move to developing budget adjustments for 15, 16, one of the things that will likely happen is there will be groups in the community that will be more affected than others with some of those budget adjustment recommendations. So it will be an opportunity for you to involve those groups, to hear them, to ensure that their concerns are understood and considered. It does not necessarily mean that you will ultimately side with those concerns that are addressed, that's part of that balance that you will have that I addressed a few minutes ago, but at least allowing people an opportunity to share their concerns, to be involved. And the last is collaborate. This is really where the board as a whole, in most cases, partners to build goodwill and recognition. So let's show you some specific examples to start, and then this again is places where you will fill in. To make it easier, in addition to those four types, we identified four groupings: schools, district, stakeholders, which are individuals and small groups, and then community, which are large groups or public events. So if you look at inform and you go down the chart, our advisory committees really fall within the district. In many cases, that advisory committee is your attendance, you're listening, sometimes you're informing, sharing information from a board's perspective. Mr. Bennett at the PTSA council is often asked to provide updates to the parent, teacher, student association council. In turn, he and Mr. Bergstrom, he's there, are collectively hearing things coming from PTSA council and may use that in their deliberation and/or decision-making. And stakeholders, you do a lot of in-person, individual conversations, and you'll see this show up in a lot of them. The in-person engagement is that individual piece that you're doing. And then community, board meetings are considered, large group or public events, it's a form of community engagement for those that are watching. Online forums, that, some of these things you have not done, but we're putting them up here, these, the areas that we have done, we call media op-ed, opinion pieces, school pages, opportunity for sharing information to the larger community via the board. Under consult, again, to obtain feedback, you'll see the ones I'll pull out of here, the study session. That is an opportunity for you to obtain feedback on specific issues, because again, it could be internal or it could be external. Advisory committees show up here, you'll see as we go through stakeholders, we do surveys, both individual, small group, and in community. You've talked about, a number of you brought up, public forums. And while I put up public forums, that can be a broad expanse of different kinds of forums. You can have what's called listening sessions, you can have a public forum on a specific issue. The stakeholders' meetings will be a form of a public forum. One that I put up here that is getting more and more attention and is used effectively at, for government and, and city council and school boards is what's called World Cafe, which will be similar to our stakeholder meetings as Christine Robleski and I continue to develop that specific format. And then involve, which is the, to engage to ensure concerns are heard, you have legislators, labor management, joint city board meetings in the past. The PAC summit is really the parent advisory committee that you will be forming this fall, and the summit will be sometime in late October or early November. Referendums are considered, opportunities to involve through engagement. And then finally, collaboration. From an individual perspective, it's school visits, it's school events, the school achievement recognition dinner. It's an opportunity to engage... It's an opportunity to engage various different groups, not that you set out to specifically do that, but because you're with those groups, you can do that through conversations. Graduations, and I didn't put up each one of the individuals on the screen, but you see there, you have the two high schools, Metro South ABE, Family Stars, Bloomington Transition Center. Those are all graduations, opportunity for the board to be seen as engaging its community. Honors and recognition. Tonight, we recognized some students and also some community members around the food drive. That's engaging the community, not only the work that led into it and the work involved with that activity, but also through the honors of recognition. Your youth advisory, and then finally, those big events like the Heritage Day's Parade, the Pancake Breakfast, which was very successful and certainly would be advised that is build on for additional activities, the district-wide food drive, Diversity Day, and National Night Out, which many school boards join city council members or law enforcement officers to those large block events that are part of National Night Out. Wonderful opportunity to engage large community groups at those events. With that, I'll stop talking, take questions, or allow you to converse and discuss the proposal, proposed plan, I should say.
All right. Well, first, I just want to say thanks for summarizing all of the different conversations. It's not an easy thing to do, to sit and listen and take notes, at least not for me. So thank you for putting all this together. Anyone have questions, comments so far? Tom?
Well, the last thing you mentioned, the, with the National Night Out, do you aware of anything that's in Bloomington currently where they get together and go out and speak to these groups?
There's several communities, sometimes cul-de-sacs, sometimes neighborhoods that actually have, they're blocked off by-
Well, yeah, yeah. I just know, do you know of like, city council members and mayors where they actually-
Mm-hmm.
Like organize through some-
They will go-
Random land-
If they hear about them, they'll go and visit. So the mayor has been at them, Chief Jeff Potts, I've seen Chief Uly Seal at some of those as well. So there have been other city council members that have been at those, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea, if we did something on organized basis. I don't know if we wanted to do something like that, but that'd be something I'd be interested in.
Those types of visits are, as I understand them, are drop-ins. So it's not, they weren't sent an invitation necessarily to come-
Correct.
And they heard about this neighborhood or that neighborhood, and so police chief goes here, fire chief, mayor goes there, and they drop in and say hi. So it's, really can be that simple.
I've been the chair of my neighborhood, or the co-chair, for a number of years. And you fill, actually, when you register with the city, you have, fill out a form. And on there, it says if you want to visit from a city council member, if you'd like it, doesn't mean they come to yours, because they can't go to every, if you'd like fire, if you, department, if you'd like ambulance, if you would like police, and you can pick which things that you would be interested in having visit your block party. So maybe we could talk to the city and have them list school board on there.
Yeah.
Be nice.
Does that mean we're going to show up in the, in the Bloomington van?
Yeah, there you go.
Well, everybody wants the fire, the police, and the ambulance, so they can, they're already spread thin, so.
Do they overflow?
Yeah, we're the extras.
Wrap us around?
Get one of those little, little go-karts that seat two people and putz around to the different neighborhoods.
Just bring you five-gallon pail of ice cream and cola.
There you go.
There you go.
If we had a school board ice cream truck, we would be the hit.
There you go.
Well-
You have to put that in the special. We did it.
We'll get a permit for that ice cream truck. Yeah, Nellie?
Yeah, Rick, for, just for information purposes, could you please clarify to us what our role is in community engagement versus community outreach?
One would, one could say that it's just one in the same, it's just a different terminology. Community engagement or community outreach is, from my perspective, is when you attend events or when you're having conversations with people, that's engaging your public. Whether it's individual, small group, or very large group, like the Pancake Breakfast would be that, that large group. So it could be one in the same. Again, I think it comes down to a terminology.
Any other comments? I know I've been tossing around an idea in my, my head, a lot of empty space up there, but I, I think that it would be, it would be a, a good thing to do, an event that I think the board would, would benefit from, to host a creative writing essay. You know, and, and I don't know, it could be a 200-word essay in elementary school, they could use what they call a brave spelling, don't worry about punctuation. And then we could, we could judge the top three in elementary, the top three in middle, the top three in, in high school, something like that, where we can get into them, get into the schools and engage them. I don't, I don't have it fleshed out right now, but, you know, I think it's one way to get out there, let these, these students show their talents, show their skills. You know, they're not all, they don't all sing in perfect pitch, but it might be one idea, something that we might be able to embrace, I hope.
If every elementary student entered, we'd probably need some help, so. I don't think I'm going to read all 10,000 or whatever there would be.
Look what they do in the back wall, you know, just on the-
Each, each one could write one word-
Yeah.
And then just-
And just put them all together in a single story.
Maybe, maybe each teacher could select one to move on or something, or.
See, now, now, all I did was offer up the idea, and it's being fleshed out. I like this, so.
Who's going to chair that committee?
I'll chair it. It just, it's just an idea, but I think that, yeah, it needs to be fleshed out, but I think it would work. You know, there's a lot of, of similar events happening right now. I, I want to say that certain community groups and the, the names of them are escaping me now, but they're, they have these types of events and they're judging them, and, and there has to be some type of format that they're using that, that helps sort of weed out some of the applicants. You know, there's 10,000 kids in school, and we're not, certainly not going to look at all 10,000 entries. That's assuming that every single one of them would want to write something.
Well, the Bloomington Optimists have an oratorical contest as well as an essay contest. I know the VFW or Legion has an essay contest too, but that's mainly for the older kids. But we have a lot of creative writers and creative artists and so forth at the earlier ones. Yeah, that's good.
We could look at them and see what their rules are. Maybe it's the first 30 that enter, and there's a timeline, something to think about. All right. So I shared. Did anyone have any, anything else? All right, so we'll, we'll look these over, we'll make sure that our ideas have been summarized. I had a chance to look it over a couple of times, and like I said, and thanks for, for doing a good job putting our thoughts together here.
So it'll come back in June to be approved by the board. Couple of things to keep in mind with this is that, in addition to putting your own pieces to the chart, if you move that, is to hold yourselves accountable as a group and individually to engage the community. There will be formal, I say formal somewhat loosely, roles for the board with respect to board meetings, study sessions, those stakeholder meetings, there'll be those informal pieces, but holding yourselves accountable to it because a year from now, you're going to want, or six months from now, you're going to want to evaluate where you are with engaging the community. Remember, this is your plan, and all members, by adopting whatever you do with, with respect to the plan, is you are agreeing to engage your community and your constituents through these various types of opportunities. And will, it certainly will help you, guide you in, in that work, you know, as well. You know, some of this, a lot of this work aligns with what we're doing in community relations and as a district, for that matter, when it comes to community engagement, always looking for opportunities. And when we can plug school board members into those, we all, we serve the district well. So I thank you for that, Rick.
Great. Thank you very much, Rick. All right, anyone have anything else? All right, that, that wraps up our agenda for this evening. We'll gather this one done.
Great. You made it, huh? That's good.